Okay. This is meeting September 19, 2017. September 19, 2017, now called to order. First we'll have the treasurer's report.
Chairman, in your papers.
We're gonna go ahead and kinda do a little change around here. We'll have the hospital authority come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm Ronnie Montgomery. And I'm glad to see that we have a quorum of our hospital authority. Of course, you all know Mr. Kredlin and Ms. Pope, Mr. Perdue, and Mr. Elliott and Mr. Speak. I believe in...I'm vice chairman of the hospital authority. And I appreciate your allowing us to come here and give you a report tonight. October 1st, 2013 is a day this community will always remember. On that day, more than 70-year history of hospital service in Lee County came to an end. Our community immediately responded. At first, we needed to get organized. With the help of Delegate Kilgore, emergency legislation was introduced in 2014 General Assembly Session that authorized the Board of Supervisors to create a hospital authority. Delegate Kilgore's leadership on this matter has been greatly appreciated. He has been joined by Congressman Griffith, Senator Mark Warner, Senator Kane, each of whom has supported us in our efforts tremendously. The moment you had the legal authority to act, you created the hospital authority. For your action, from your action in April of 14 until tonight, the hospital authority has devoted hundreds of hours to one goal: reopening a hospital in Lee County. We were determined to make it happen, and it has not been easy. First, we had to secure ownership of the building from the previous owner. That process alone took more than a year. During that time, we also obtained a critical certificate of public need from the Virginia Department of Health. The community helped us get this certificate. More than 10,000 people signed a petition supporting the hospital in less than two weeks. Our public hearing drew nearly 500 people packing the Lee County, Lee High School gymnasium. The board provided the funding, Board of Supervisors, necessary on April 29th of 15. The county bought the hospital building back. Once we owned the facility, we began to plan in earnest for the reopening of the facility. We immediately encountered another issue: the right of first refusal that the previous owner placed on the property. On July 19th, 2016, they removed this right from the agreement. Then we really began to make progress. For several months, Mountain State's Health Alliance provided significant assistance to the authority in preparing an application for critical access hospital status. They also provided us with preliminary assistance on reopening the hospital. But unfortunately, at the time, the plan they produced was not viable. During '16, the authority began to meet with and work with AmeriCorps Health, a new company focused on rural hospitals. Last Thursday night, the authority approved the asset purchase agreement for the sale of the hospital building to AmeriCorps. Here are the basic parameters of the deal. AmeriCorps, through a related entity, will purchase the hospital building. AmeriCorps will pay $2 million for the building. They will pay $500,000 at closing and will deliver a promissory note for the remainder of the $1.5 million. AmeriCorps will guarantee the debt. There are several steps to occur prior to closing, including an environmental survey of the building. AmeriCorps has already had employees and contractors in the building determining equipment needs and facility repair needs. AmeriCorps will use its best efforts to get a hospital reopened and utilize the remainder of the space in the building for other health care-related services, activities like a laboratory, detox, rehab program, veterans' care, and other such uses. AmeriCorps will also work with the authority to obtain an extension of the certificate of public need. We anticipate being in Richmond in the next two weeks to meet with the Department of Health on this extension. The hospital authority will retain a standard right of first refusal, but AmeriCorps receives an offer to sell the building. Should AmeriCorps decide during the first five years to relinquish its hospital license, the authority has a limited right to repurchase the building. AmeriCorps will now start to fund the operation of the hospital building systems by adding to the balance of its already existing generous promissory note. You originally authorized a first position secured promissory note in the amount of $250,000. The AmeriCorps loan currently has a balance of just over $130,000. We do not anticipate exceeding the $250,000 limit before closing. At the closing, the loan will be canceled and considered part of the purchase price. Finally, initially, the hospital authority will be responsible for the hospital as the authority owns the certificate of public need. Eventually, AmeriCorps will purchase these assets, including the certificate of public need. As part of the financial arrangement for the reopening of the hospital, after the closing of the purchase of the building, AmeriCorps will incur significant debt to fund some of the costs remaining related to the reopening. As a result, AmeriCorps has requested that the county subordinate its debt to the debt that AmeriCorps might place upon the building. Our authority considered the totality of AmeriCorps' letter of intent and agreed to this requirement and agreed to recommend this subordination to you. We recognize that this option to reopen our hospital has risk. AmeriCorps is a new company. They have a limited track record, and yet they have remained committed to the people of Lee County and to opening a hospital in Lee County. During the past several months, they have traveled to Lee County several times, presenting their ideas and looking at the possibility of reopening the hospital. As the authority weighed its options, we really only had one option. That was committed to reopening the hospital, and we approved the AmeriCorps transaction. Tonight, we request that you approve the transaction, including the subordination of the debt and a payment of some closing expenses and related expenses as part of the closing process pending the final documentation of the transaction. We will be back before you shortly with the final documents, including the subordination agreement. At this point, we seek only a vote of confidence and a demonstration that we should proceed. We anticipate it will take 30 to 45 days to close the transaction. But AmeriCorps is not waiting. They have already started working on the building. They are identifying equipment, and they are focused on the certificate of public need extension. We appreciate their commitment and look forward to working with them as we reopen a hospital. Before I conclude, there are many people our authority needs to thank. Our initial leader, Lloyd Sonny Martin, who was the chairman and provided enormous guidance and motivation in getting us organized and started. We appreciate his commitment to the people of Lee County, and unfortunately, his health problems caused him to have to relocate to Knoxville near one of his daughters, and we wish him well. Many, many community leaders have supported the authority, and we appreciate their support. The Board of Supervisors has supported our work, and we are grateful for your confidence. Aleconandra Mohany from Cosito Health attended our meeting and is very knowledgeable on these matters. The Community Foundation has financially supported our authority in a significant way, as have several other donors. We thank them. Tonight, we take a big step toward reopening the hospital, and we appreciate your support. There are other commissioners here tonight who may wish to speak, and I invite them to speak now if they wish. Thank you very much. Anybody wish to speak? We certainly appreciate all your folks' help, and without your support, and the community, the Hospital Foundation really has helped us tremendously, too. There have just been so many people. There's been a lot of meetings. As a couple of you know, we could only have two of you at a meeting. And Mosley and Mr. Leonard came to most of them, and we appreciate all your interest. If you have any questions or anything, I've got plenty of people here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. We're chairman, so let's come in. It has been a long, grown-out process, and the people of this community just don't know how many hours that you guys have put in and beat yourselves to death trying to make the right decision. And it wasn't an easy decision by any means, but I appreciate your persistence and hanging in there and getting this thing along as far as we are right now. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I want to personally thank each and every one of you for all your work, the time that you put into the effort. Thank you, Ron. Who else wish to speak?
I'd just like to thank myself for everything that they've done. I know they've put in a lot of hours, a lot of hard work, and it's come a long way for us, and so I appreciate everything they've done.
I'd also like to say thank you for all you've done, and hopefully, this will actually something to help to the longevity of the hospital. Because I think this new outlook that they have on keeping this up and running might be something that can be sustained throughout time instead of just opening and then closing back down a few years. So I'm actually glad it's going around as it's going, myself.
Just to set the transaction, approval of the transaction.
Get approval for the transaction.
Approval for the transaction, as per any. And I'll second that. Have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, folks. Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
I might add, the next November 17th, I believe, or 19th is when our certificate expires. It's been extended one year, and it's, we've got to show substantial progress about reopening the hospital, and we're gonna have to go to Richmond, and we'll need all the help and guidance that we can get. So it's critical that we get that. I don't think, the hospital can't be reopened by mid-November, but we're gonna try our best to get that extended. But it's gonna be, it's not gonna be an easy task, I'm afraid, you know?
Do you need a written letter from us, Ron? I mean, basically, show them that, that helps?
Anything, yeah.
As, I think as they develop this and get a little bit further into the process, they'll have to submit something by mid-October.
Yeah.
And it looks like you're gonna be coming back to us probably at a call meeting prior to that time to get the final subordination approval.
Yeah, I understand from our lawyer, Jeff Mitchell, that he's been in contact with Stacy and that y'all are working on that agreement.
If you want to vote to go ahead and give a letter of support to that effort when it's needed, you could go ahead and do that tonight. We'll draft it when it's ready, when it's actually needed.
Well, I didn't want to have to go bear without it. I'll make that motion then.
All right.
We draft the letters of support.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, folks.
Thank you all.
I appreciate y'all taking this up early on. That cleans half the crowd out.
Well, do y'all stay for public expression? Next, we'll get our counsel up to turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, Ms. Muncie. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you all tonight and to give you all an update of the in-house delinquent fines and costs program that my office implemented last year. As you may recall, I was here a couple of times last year explaining to you all my idea for this program and how I thought it would benefit the county. And I'm happy to be here tonight to tell you all what a great success that it's been. So as you know, beginning in fiscal year 2017, my office began collecting all delinquent fines and costs assessed by the Lee County Circuit and Combined Courts. Now, previously, these delinquent fines and costs were collected by the Department of Taxation. As the collector of these fines and costs, the Department of Taxation was entitled to keep a percentage of what they collected as their fee. In fiscal year 2016, that fee was $31,455, which the county saw none of. In fiscal year 2017, my office generated a collection fee of $48,256. This is obviously a big improvement from $31,455. And this is significant for two reasons. One, it means that we've been more effective at collecting delinquent fines and costs, which I think we can all agree is a good thing. We want defendants to pay their fines and costs. And when they do pay their costs, the taxpayers pay less of a burden in picking up the slack, so that's a good thing. Two, the county is actually gonna get to keep a percentage of the collection fee, which amounts to $23,432. The Commonwealth of Virginia gets to keep the rest. But again, none of the fees generated by the Department of Taxation were ever returned to the county. So this $23,432 is new revenue coming in the county that the county has never seen before, so I view that as a huge success. You all, of course, agreed to supplement my office with those funds, and we've already made a lot of plans to put this money to good use. In the next few weeks, we're gonna be buying two new computers, one a laptop, one a desktop. We've also purchased scanners and external hard drives so that we can scan all of our old paper files and save them offsite, which will allow us to destroy the paper files in our office that are taking up a ton of space and free up a lot more space in our office. We also now have subscriptions to online legal databases that will allow us to be much more efficient in doing our legal research. So technologically, we're gonna have one of the most advanced Commonwealth Attorney's Offices in the state, and this money is a big reason why. I have some more ideas about the way we can use this money in the future, and I'll be submitting those to you all in writing soon, so just be on the lookout for that. There's been a lot of people that have contributed to the success of this program. First, I want to recognize and commend every member of this board. Thank you for working with me from the very beginning of this and helping me get this started from the ground floor. I also want to thank Circuit Court Clerk Renee Lamie, Combined Courts Clerk Sammy Horton, our treasurer Rita McCann, who provided a lot of assistance throughout the year. And of course, I want to give the biggest thanks of all to my staff, who have really done most of the work with this, and they've taken on extra responsibilities and worked extremely hard to make this program a success. So, big thanks to them. So I look forward to continuing this program in the future and bringing additional funds into Lee County. The reason why I'm here tonight is to see if we can do the same deal for fiscal year 18 that we did for fiscal year 17 and do the program in the same way moving forward. And so I'll entertain any questions or comments that you have at this time.
Is that something that has to be motioned yearly? I mean, is that yearly?
Yes, and I, I don't know if we can do this thing or not, but I'll make the motion that it be renewed every year from now on, if that's something that is possible. If not, I'm happy to come back on a yearly basis and give you an update about...
Why do like those?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to do that anyway.
But I didn't know if it's something that was required to be done yearly.
Well, what I'm asking for, I think, does require board approval because it's about where funds are going. So I think that part of it does require the board approval. It does not require board approval for me to collect it. It just doesn't make sense for me to spend all this time collecting it if my office is not gonna see a benefit from that. So that's what I have to negotiate with you all.
Based on that, I think it's probably best to just schedule it as soon as you have a report each year from the prior year.
That's fine.
To go ahead and put it on the agenda, and then during the update time, the board can determine whether to continue the program the same.
That's fine.
I'll make a motion and we continue this process that Fuller's offered up to us. It sounds like you're doing a good job at it, and any monies that we get in this court house that we get to keep, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I would second that. And we got any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good to go?
I'm gonna make a statement about it. I'm surprised about the amount of money. That's a good hunt of money.
Thank you. I gave you all an estimate last year between 10 and 40 I thought we could get, so we're right there, kinda in the middle. And I think going forward, this was our first year, so I hope that we can improve and continue to be more and more effective year in and year out. But any money that comes in here that we weren't seeing before, like you say, Mr. Mosley, is a good thing.
That's right.
And we weren't seeing any of this before.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, next we have public expression. If you would, state your name, where you live, and I guess we'll let you speak for about three minutes out of that.
It's not gonna take that long. Mr. Chairman, I'm Robert Boss from Jonesville. I'm here to make you aware that on November 20th, there'll be a legislative breakfast and forum at the vet school. This is handled annually by the Southwest Virginia Chambers of Commerce. Hopefully, you'll all be able to attend. Certainly want to have you put it on the calendar. It'll be a brunch starting at 10:00 a.m. on the 20th, and we expect probably 150 to 200 people, plus the legislators from this area. So again, just wanted to make you aware of it, save the date, and we'll get invitations out to you in the not-too-distant future.
Good evening. My name's John Combs. I'm a registered voter of District 2. As y'all know, it's on the referendum for the schools, demolition. I encourage y'all to go to these meetings. If this meeting hadn't been the night, I'd have been to my fourth one, because every time I go, it's different numbers. And when they say taxes, they say, "Oh, it won't be us raising taxes." It's Board of Supervisors that'll be raising taxes. This county is the third poorest county in the Commonwealth. The average salary in this county for people is $31,000. We cannot afford it. As a taxpayer, I can't afford more taxes. Did y'all do any research before you put it on the referendum? Did you look at their budget, their maintenance budget? In the last two years, their part of the maintenance budget has gone from up here to here. They have really dropped the maintenance budget. They haven't had a certified roofer in to fix any roofs. They're just patching it with their maintenance department. And I've researched a lot of this stuff, because this is, as a taxpayer, it's gonna kill us. It is absolutely gonna kill us. And those of you who have been to meetings, you've heard them say, "Well, it won't be us paying, you know, raising taxes. It'll be the Board of Supervisors." Did y'all do any research? I don't know, I don't understand it. I really don't.
John, I stated at that first meeting I had out there, all we did was vote to let it go on the referendum. That is not an endorsement that we support it. We're just letting the citizens of this county vote. It ultimately comes back to us. If it fails on election day, it's a done deal. It's gone. If it passes, it comes back to this board.
Okay.
But by us letting it go on referendum, there is no way saying that we support this.
Yeah, I want the school board to hear from the people that they are totally against this thing.
Well, three meetings I've been to, there's been one person supporting.
Yeah, I mean, you won't see anybody supporting.
Well, I've got, you know, I've got something I'd like to add. You know, I was at one of the meetings so far, but so far, all I've heard is criticism. Haven't heard anybody have any ideas of how to take care of this problem. You know, nobody wants to, it's easy to offer criticism, but it seems like it's harder to offer, you know, any kind of ideas or anything, because, you know, as you and I both know, the research has been done. Something has to be done. And it doesn't matter whether you build a new school, or whether you put new roofs on, or whatever you do, taxpayers still gonna have to pay for that. So, you know, we need ideas. I think at these meetings, I think we need some positive stuff coming out of these meetings. I mean, it's simple. If you're against it, just simply go vote no. If you're for it, vote yes. But when you're up in these meetings, rather than take the time to criticize, how about just say something positive, you know, something that somebody might be able to work with? I haven't seen that from anybody.
That might be easy if you can get a straight answer from them. You can't get a straight answer. I've been waiting on an answer for two weeks. Oh, I'll get back with you. I've heard nothing. I'm still waiting on to see what the school board owes the IDA for that loan. It first said, "Oh, it's paid." Now it comes out it's not paid. I can't get an answer on how much is on there.
I can clear that up for you right now.
All right.
Initially, that went through the IDA for interim financing, because at the time, they made, they got approval of the Board of Supervisors to seek funding from the literary fund. At that time, it was like 2008, there were 15 projects in front of that one, and they did not have funding immediately for it. They told them it would probably be two years. By the time that project came up for funding, the state had suspended anything coming from the state literary fund. It was basically a closed account for several years. That reopened, or that process reopened in 2013. In that interim time, the school board got interim financing through SunTrust, through the IDA, to build that project, that Driden. In 2013, they issued bonds and got the funding from the literary fund. They've been paying on those bonds since that time. If all payments are current as of today, they should have a principal balance of $1,595,000 on the Driden improvements.
That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. Maybe you can answer this. What's our bond rating?
I can't tell you what our bond rating is. We haven't, we haven't done enough bond, and the bonds that we've issued have been in a much smaller amount. We did a bond issue for the social services building. We did a bond issue last year for construction of the transfer station and the extension office building, and refinanced the social services building, not extending the term, but just refinancing to get a better interest rate and actually save money in the long term. to get a better interest rate and actually save money in the long term. So those were all, that one was two million some dollars. We've not issued a bond anywhere near a forty-four million dollar bond. And that's, that's gonna be a different process than getting a bond rating on that. So I have no idea what our rating would be.
I appreciate y'all's time, and I appreciate you, Dave, for voting no.
We got anybody else for public expression? Okay, then, we'll move right along to the approval of minutes for August eighth, two thousand and seventeen special call meeting and August fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen regular meeting. Motion to approve, Chair. Seven. Is that for both?
Yes.
All right, motion to approve both, and we got a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Yeah, I made, I made, I wouldn't hear that now, so I can't verify that, so we can indeed split them up.
Okay. Okay, then, let's do this again. We'll need a motion for the special call meeting. Larry wasn't here at that meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, got a motion, got a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm staying. And on the other one, that's?
I'll make that motion. It's on August fifteenth regular meeting.
Okay, Larry's made a motion for August fifteenth.
I'll second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we got that taken care of.
First, next, the tip and fee refunds.
They overpaid the account. I don't know whether they paid it twice or what, but they overpaid it.
That stuff kinda ought to have two on the same, two out of three be the issue. Is there a joint motion for all three? I'll make a motion to approve all three refunds. Sonia Gell-Walther, John Laundromat, Marvin Heimler.
I've got a motion to approve all three refunds. Got a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, refund approved. Now to the county administrator reports that payroll warrants have been issued.
Pay the bills.
Okay, we got a motion to pay the bills. Got a second?
You've got delegations first, sorry.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, got you, that's right. Okay, how about there, Mr. Roger Elkins with the Daniel Boone Soil and Water Conservation Authority?
As the chairman states, I'm Roger Elkins, and I'm here on behalf of the Daniel Boone Soil and Water Conservation District. And I appreciate the opportunity to come before the board and just give an update on what's going on down at the district. As y'all are aware, y'all do support the district financially, and we appreciate that. We also have a partnership where we administer the county's erosion and filtration permit process. We think that is a good partnership. I think our annual report was included in your package, noting that last year, we did complete eighteen contracts in excess of eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Lots of data there about how much finance what we did. And of course, everybody here is aware that our, our main focus here is water quality. And I think everyone will agree that everybody in this county is for good, clean water. I will let you know that currently, we do have under contract for this year, twenty projects for an excess of nine hundred, well, approximately nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. So basically, the same program that we had last year, similar type of work going on. We do not have any ongoing projects in the acid mine drainage thing. Funding for that has been hard to come by. There are some rumblings that some money's gonna be available. Generally, that comes through divisions of mines, minerals, and energy, and we work with them to disseminate that money. So I just wanted to give that update. If anybody has any questions, you know, I'll try to answer them. I'm not too up on that, but I'll give it a shot if anybody's got any questions.
Any questions from anybody?
I have. I don't have. So there, and we just thank you for your continued support, and we think we're doing good work.
So I make some good progress.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we can have that motion. Motion to pay the bills. Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of paying the bill?
Aye.
Okay, supplemental appropriation.
Chair, the majority of these, with the exception of the second one, are all reappropriations of funds that are in funds that do carry over from year to year. They have unspent balances, and they have to be used for specific purposes. So I think several of those are either sheriff's office or Commonwealth Attorney's Office, fines and forfeitures, and other sheriff's department funds that were unencumbered at the end of the year that they're allowed to spend. One is on the drug court expenditure. The second one, that is just a supplemental appropriation, not a reappropriation, is funding received from the Library of Virginia for a grant in the Circuit Court Clerk's office that the funds have been received for this year.
I make a motion to approve supplemental appropriations. Okay, we got a motion to approve the supplemental appropriations. Got a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we'll go to board appointments. Okay, Jason Spears, he contacted me about being reappointed, so I make a motion to reappoint Jason on that. Lord, he asked to serve. He's already a hall nurse.
Second.
Okay, we got a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Lonsen Pine, office on you.
Anybody still heard anything from the school?
No. Motion to table. Okay, we got a motion to table. We got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That first one is an adult appointment, not a you.
Kim Roof. I make the motion that we appoint Kim Roof and then table the other two appointments that.
Okay, I have some additional information that I've forgotten. I've been reminded here by my trustee assistant. We got some information on that appointee several months ago. I waited till it came up for reform. It's been three or four months, I guess, when we got that information. I don't think she's ever attended a meeting. So.
Tabled all three of them. All right. Back to our original motion.
We done passed it, so we good?
Okay, we done passed it, so we can move on to water. Redevelopment and Housing Authority.
Water, St. Charles Water Authority. The redevelopment house authority is next month.
Well, that's what I was, 'cause I was fixing to say, it's supposed to be on the next one, I believe.
Sorry.
All right.
Okay.
St. Charles Water Authority.
Yeah. Did we ever, did you ever find out about the one I was asking about?
That's it. He has provided a letter of resignation to me. I did not include it because it was basically an email and contained some personal information that I did not feel should be made.
I can't remember. I had that in my notes, the one I was wanting to appoint the last meeting. But he's already been appointed. I know it's Coys Boy, but I can't remember what his name is. So I'll, we'll just table it if it's all right. If y'all make a motion to table it till next.
Unless you're gonna write Coys Boy in there.
Yeah, what? What did you table? The St. Charles.
Water Authority.
All right.
Tabled it till next.
I had his name with me the last time, sorry, but I didn't bring it, I didn't bring it this time.
I'll figure it out.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll table that one till next meeting. Now I'm lost, Chair.
Tourism, tourism.
Tourism. Charles Slimp Jr.
Tourism Committee.
I don't know about that guy. Well, I got a letter from him. He said he'll serve.
He did?
Can you produce the letter?
I'm making a motion to reappoint, reappoint Charles Slimp Jr.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next is the Community Services Board request for a name change approval.
This is one of those that sort of comes after the fact. And if you read the letter of explanation, I'll just highlight it. Back in two thousand and one, the board of directors for Planning District One Community Services Board voted to change their name to Planning District One Behavioral Health Services, because that's primarily what they deal with. They did not actually make that change on their I R S documents until two thousand and twelve. But they've been recently notified by the State Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services that all community service boards that are operating without a name that does not include the words Community Service Board in the name must have approval for the name change from their local governing bodies that created the community services board. So basically, I'm not gonna go all through the rest of the other information there, but they're basically asking for this board to approve the name change that they did in two thousand and one, to comply with what the state says is now required, because it does not contain the words Community Service Board in it. It requires approval from Lee, Weis, Scott, and the City of Norton governing bodies. There is a resolution in your package as well, Resolution seventeen dash oh twelve, that would accomplish that.
That is in compliance with I R S also?
Yes, yes. It's in full compliance with everything they're providing. The services, it's just one of those glitches in state code that says they have to have that, those words, Community Service Board, in their name. Otherwise, if they don't, they have to have approval from their governing bodies that have created them to allow them to have that organization without that name in their name, or without those words in their name.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution seventeen dash oh twelve.
Okay, we got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the Heart of Appalachia Tourism Authority request.
Heart of Appalachia is requesting support from each of the governing bodies in their district for two initiatives of the authority. The first request, they're asking, there's two resolutions in your package on this, as well as some information from Heart of Appalachia. But first request is for a resolution of support. They are requesting language changes and updates to the legislation that created them and governs the Tourism Authority. The primary, primary changes has to do with the makeup of their board of directors. Currently, they have a member from, a representative from each participating locality, which gives them a seven-member board. And currently, their bylaws state that it is to be the chair of each tourism committee or authority in each county. Or, I think it could be a designate, but typically, it falls to the chair of each one of those. What they are asking for, basically, is to expand their board and to also create, to allow, there's no, there's no role for tourism directors on their board. It always fell to a committee member. The tourism directors in each county could not serve on their board. And it also did not allow any representation for the tourism industry on the board. So they're asking the General Assembly to reconsider that and basically provide them with an eighteen-member board. The board would be made up of the tourism directors from each locality, if they have one. And if they do not have a tourism director, it could be some other, someone else who has an active role in tourism, Chamber of Commerce member, or some other person appointed by the local governing body. There would also be eight positions. I've lost my place here. Where's that? Hold on, just a jump ahead, one page too far. There would be another eight positions to be filled by representative or representatives from the tourism industry businesses within the region. How that would work, the tourism directors in each locality would present a slate of possible candidates to the local governing body. The local governing body would then select one of those to make the appointment to the Heart of Appalachia Board. That would give them sixteen members. The remaining two, one of those seats would fall to a representative of Virginia State Parks, Federal Parks, or the Brex Interstate Park. And that representative would be selected by the other sixteen board members on the authority. There would also be one other board member also selected by the sixteen member, the other sixteen members of the board. And that would be reserved for an at-large tourism representative. It could be anywhere in the region that that person was selected. So that is basically the gist of the changes that they're, that they're requesting, to provide a little bit more input from their tourism directors and also from the tourism business industry in Southwest Virginia, or in that service area. So that's the first request. Excuse me, Resolution seventeen dash oh thirteen would accomplish that. Their second request is a resolution of support for their request to the state for funding of two hundred thousand dollars over the next biennium, one hundred thousand dollars each year in the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen biennium. There's a resolution for that as well. I draft a resolution seventeen dash oh fourteen for your consideration.
On these appointed positions, are those paid board appointed?
They're not paid by the Tourism Authority. I don't believe those are paid.
You can't, what I'm asking, would they be county funded?
Pardon?
Would any of this be county funded? Would we be responsible for any of this?
Typically, most board appointments that the county makes, there are some that are, that they're not paid, they're paid by whatever body they're appointed to. But most other committees and others, the county has a fifty-dollar-a-month payment.
You know, these board members aren't paid anything for serving on the board. They are reimbursed for their mileage, but there is no payment for serving on the board.
I didn't know if we was having to add two or three different ones, and then they talking about adding different positions, how much that would fall on the county versus actually on the Appalachian Tourism.
Well, whether or not, whether or not to provide a stipend payment to them, as you do many other boards, that would be totally the local governing body's decision on whether to do that. The authority, the Heart of Appalachia Authority does not reimburse, pay them, as Mr. Slimp says, they reimburse mileage. But the decision on whether to pay them anything would be totally a decision of this board.
But I'm saying that would be, if we done that, that would be all we're responsible for. We don't have to pay in these extra positions that you're talking about, the semi-different positions.
No, I mean, the, what it would result in, you would have two appointments from Lee County. Uh. Uh, at, at, at least two appointments from Lee County. Each other locality participating would have two appointments. Right now, you'd have one appointment to that board. Basically, it falls, uh, by the bylaws of the authority, it falls directly to a member of the Tourism Committee or the Chair of the Tourism Committee, which you all appoint. Uh, you don't appoint directly to the Heart of Appalachia Board. In this case, you would. You would, you would appoint the tour, the tourism industry representative. Uh, and if we don't have a Tourism Director, then you would also be making that appointment. You would, you would select someone from the community to serve in that role. The, since we do have a state park and a federal park, uh, located partially in the county, there's a potential that there could be an appointment from them. Also, because there's an at-large tourism industry representative, there's a possibility that that person could be from Lee County. So, you know, in theory, you could have as many as four appointees to that board, but you would only make two of them, uh, because the, the Heart of Appalachia Board makes those regional appointments. So you wouldn't be responsible for them anymore.
That's what I was asking. That, that most, if we done that stipend, where for the board appointment, that would be all we was asking. And basically, the second was just support for the money they're asking for?
Yes, from the state.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution seventeen dash oh one three and seventeen dash oh one four.
Okay, we got a motion. On seventeen dash zero one three and seventeen dash zero one four. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Okay, next is Constitution Week Proclamation.
The Lowlady Chapter, Daughters of American Revolution, have requested, uh, as they do each year, that the board consider a proclamation for Constitution Week, which actually has already started, uh, September seventeenth through the twenty-third. There is a closed proclamation in there.
I'll make a motion. We approve this proclamation, uh, Lowlady Chapter. Daughters of American Revolution. Okay, we got a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Okay, next is the Cost Estimate for Renovation of the Old Extension Offices.
I'm sure you all like this one. The Lakin Group has provided cost estimates, uh, for renovating the old extension office building for future use of the Electoral Board and Registrar. And as you can see from the, uh, floor plan that they provided, the, the proposals they came up with, they would basically be churning down the majority of the building, the, the lower part, uh, next to the highway there. It's on the lower level and the back, uh, section. Demolition of about twenty-two hundred square feet of that property. And then, uh, doing some site work to build up that lower elevation to meet the floor elevation of the upper area and add a three hundred square foot addition to it to get the space that would be needed. It includes, uh, as I said, demolishing, uh, about twenty-two hundred square feet, uh, including removing any of the non-ADA compliant sidewalks, uh, removing the shingle roof and the sheathing, uh, doing abatement of the asbestos floor tile and removal of all existing interior finishes. Then, uh, going back with, uh, new roof, sheeting, shingles, new windows, exterior doors, exterior insulation and finish system, interior doors, vinyl floor tile, uh, painting all the wallboard, new cabinetry, uh, suspended tile, ceiling panels, and also thermal insulation in exterior walls and acoustical insulation in interior partitions. New plumbing lines and fixtures, new HVAC, new electrical power, lighting and communication lines that would be followed into data. Estimated cost on that is two hundred five thousand nine dollars. Uh, they also did an estimate on demolishing the entire building and rebuilding, building a new structure there, and that estimate is two hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars. Now, do you want me to check on a modular building on that other lot?
I can't believe that it's a half like it.
Well, that's going for a blank.
Uh, yeah, we had to do some site work to build that, to build that lower section up and get all that.
Seal that lot down there.
Yep, we tried.
It's like we can't vote if we can't hear.
The only...
Now, we're going off of lane groups.
Right, this is, this is an estimate. This is an estimate. Now, I will tell you, uh... We wrote to, we, we were talking, uh, about the, you building PSA building. They just built, they're, they're in the process of building a two thousand square foot building. I think the initial bid, which it had, it did have a drive-through window, but it's, I don't know, it doesn't have a cover or anything. I don't think going out over, it's not like a bank drive-through window. Uh, but, uh, they've got about a two thousand square foot building, and they only received one bid for the project. And that exceeded what they expected, so they negotiated some of the costs down. But they're still in, I'm trying to remember exactly what he told me, but it's somewhere in the two hundred fifty thousand dollar range. So, um, I wasn't, I, I guess I was surprised, I wasn't totally shocked, but I was surprised that this was gonna be that much because, of course, by tearing down parts of the old building, there's, the demolition costs associated with that is not as cheap as you always think it would be. And, you know, at the same time demolishing interior walls or the wall finishes, the wallboard and things like that, you're still having to retain a lot of the structure, but you're also having to move some of the walls to lay the space out like it's needed. So some of that work, some of that demo work is actually more costly than if you just take a wrecking ball and tear it down because you've got to preserve some of the existing structure around it. You can't just, you know, lay in on it. You have to, you have to be protective of that. But, uh, that's, that, that's their estimate.
I personally think that we could look at, uh, putting it out and looking to see what kind of bids we could hit on itself. I don't, I don't... That's, that's kind of far-fetched, I think, personally.
And to do that, we need a set of plans. We just have to have an engineer architect seal on them. And, and, and the actual space. Now, um, in, in one comment I made, I, I understand about wanting to keep it closed. The only issue I get into is parking's no better down here than it is up here, you know, with them in the building, the way it's used now, because all that, all of the parking area behind the building is utilized basically by the Sheriff's Office. And then out on the street, we've got, uh, well, on any given day, we've always, I, I won't say always, but four days a week, you've got at least one jail van there. Two to three days a week, you could have two vans sitting out there on the same day, taking up extra space. So there's not a lot of parking available for people trying to come in and access the, the Registrar's office.
Maybe you can turn it sideways, you can pull it in front of them.
That'd be a possibility, if we keep everybody else out of it.
That wouldn't be bad. We'd put, uh, roofing nail for a while.
This whole Pitts Town County Cruiser's pulling in there to be paying the fix though.
Yeah. I, I think we can regulate who parks there. It could turn sideways, I don't know, I'm not bad at either looking at anything, but, you know, you might have to, there's a parking place in there, maybe.
I, and one thing in looking at the plan that they came up with, uh, to be honest with these new machines, and I'd have to go down there and do some measurements on that vault I haven't measured. And I'd also have to measure these new, uh, ballot, uh, scanners. I'm not, we'll have eighteen. I'm not sure we could get all eighteen in that old vault space for storage. I, I don't know if that's large enough, just to be honest, but I'll, I'll try to verify that within the next few days. I'll, I'll measure it next week sometime.
So you, we got those machines ordered, is that correct?
Yes, they are under order, yes.
And have in stock?
Yes, uh, we're hoping to have delivery sometime later this month. And, uh, we'll, you may have already seen that, uh, the state did decertify those machines on the eighth day of September, so...
Oh, they did?
Yes, they did decertify them. So we were, we had to jump on some others locally, uh, who had not made the decision yet, who, who had to get their orders in, so...
Well, it's something we're gonna have to be making a decision on pretty quick, isn't it? I mean, because, uh, those machines are gonna be here and they're gonna have to be put up on.
And I got notice, uh, late last week from the, uh, from Mountain Empire Older Citizens, the Children's Advocacy Center. They got partial funding for their grant, so they will be expecting to utilize these little office spaces up here behind the Congress Attorney's Office there, where we proposed for them. So we've got to clean a few items out of there. We don't have a whole lot, uh, a few filing cabinets and tables and a few things, but we'll, we'll get those moved out.
So you're also gonna look at some options for, uh, a different building somewhere else? Is that what you said?
Well, I just said, you know, one of the things I proposed possibility was if, if we, when we, the lot that we bought, uh, down in the west part of town here, as a proposed site for the Extension Office. The Extension Office was about a twenty-five hundred square foot building. And, uh, we were looking at a paved parking area. We had a, we had a lot more stormwater issues to deal with. There was also some soil, soil issues there, uh, for slab-on-grade type, the only that we were looking at. Talked with the engineer, if we went in with a smaller building, say a fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred square foot building, would that change anything with stormwater and soil conditions? And he said it very possibly could because the stormwater, some of the regs on that have lightened up just a little bit. So, uh, it might not be as extensive because I, I think we had site work on that side. Of course, I, like I said, that include paved parking and, and everything. Site work on that was about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So if we can eliminate a good portion of that and have a smaller structure in there at the same time, and one of the things I thought about in looking at and having some equipment, because they were, you know, they were pushing, trying to get out as soon as possible, was going with some type of modular building that would be done instead rather than a stick build.
If we just have to look at the water, Danny.
So that was over around twenty, around twenty-seven thousand, if I'm looking at it correctly, to demolish the section of it?
Uh, fourteen thousand seven eighty-four. To do the demolition, on the second page from Lane, right behind the email itself, that gives a breakdown on costs anticipated for each portion. That include, included, uh, demolition of approximately twenty-two hundred and twenty-five square feet of structure and removal of any non-ADA compliant sidewalks. And that's probably the sidewalk that comes right up in front of the building because there's steps in it.
So basically, you talked about double that to eliminate the whole building?
Uh, well...
Because that was about the height of the one.
Yeah, and you would still have the asbestos abatement in demolition of the entire building. You'd have to still do the abatement on the, on the asbestos tile.
Well, either way, that's gonna be...
Yeah, it has to be done regardless. The, the demolition probably wouldn't be double that because there's only another, uh, about fourteen hundred square feet there. And then two, uh, you would not have to be cautious about destroying some of the walls on the rest of the building. Yeah, I mean, it'd be, yeah, you, you could, I don't want to use the word be more reckless, but you wouldn't have to be as cautious about preserving the integrity of some of the structure that it's, that would remain in just renovating.
So we could always, that, that option would be available to get rid of that and move something mobile into there?
Yes, that would be a possibility too. Again, there would have to be some site work to get the site, depending on how it's located. Actually, you might be able to use the upper portion and not even, uh, touch that lower portion, but that's gonna take away some of your parking, possible parking space too.
I guess something we need to look at. Tomorrow.
We'll have to look at some different options.
You know, those fucking machines don't have to be in that vault. They have to be in that office, but they don't have to be in that vault. Is that correct?
Well, they have to be in a secure place. I don't even know that they have to, they don't have to necessarily be in that office, as long as they're in a secure place.
I mean, when they were down here, they had no vault.
No, they were, it was wide open.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess we're gonna table this till we look at it further.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Guess next would be the Shover Run Convenience Center lease.
All right, I had hoped to have an actual final version. I did not receive it in time, but, uh, I have reviewed, uh, what they have sent to me. I sent them a draft. They sent me, uh, another one back. Uh, the only thing that was out of the ordinary for me was the proposed cost. They had a hundred and fifty-dollar-a-month cost. They've verbally given agreement to a hundred dollars a month, uh, which is typically what we pay for other sites. My recommendation today would be, uh, that the board approve, uh, the proposed lease to be reviewed by the county attorney before it's signed.
So your proposal is just that we just have Stacy look at the lease, not go ahead and make a move on the hundred dollars a month?
Oh, no, I'm asking for approval of the lease subject to her final review before we sign it.
So moves.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we got the Building Code Officials Interview.
Yes, the, uh, application deadline was last Wednesday. Uh, we did mail copies of the applications out to you under September February. Mr. Cope, I apologize, we're gonna have to investigate postal service down in your area to see what they're doing with your mail.
I usually, I usually get, it may be there. We personally come up missing, right?
But I have asked that you review those and, uh, be prepared to give us your, not in, of accession necessarily, but be able, be, uh, prepared to turn in your, uh, recommendations for, uh, candidates to be interviewed and a date for the interviews.
How many candidates do we have? We got eleven, Matt.
Had to wait on the application.
Can we, uh, carry us over into the closed session under employment? Discuss it then?
Well, scheduling of interviews is not, uh, something subject, I mean, uh, I'm not sure on that one. I'm gonna re, I'm gonna defer that to the attorney.
I don't think scheduling is what he's talking about.
I was just talking about discussing the importance.
If you're gonna be discussing individual names, that would be, uh, protected under closed session.
Let's do that, and if, I mean, I'm fine with setting a date. If you all want to do that right now, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. Okay, we're good on that? Okay, we'll get on that. Next is the Woodway and Seminary Convenience Centers.
Uh, the last month's meeting, we made you aware of the death of the Woodway Convenience Center operator. The Seminary Convenience Center operator has requested to be transferred to that side. I think it's actually closer to where he lives, uh, which would leave an opening at the Seminary Convenience Center side. Uh, we do have an individual, and I thought, uh, Gary had already taken care of this, but maybe, I guess he thought that needed board action to do this. We have a, uh, gentleman, uh, that filled in temporarily over Jasper that's willing to work in the seminary area, would, would like to work there for a while. I asked him today, I said, does he want a permanent job? And he said, well, I don't know about that. But he, he is willing to do the temporary. If that's all right, we go ahead and move him into that temporarily. And, uh, Mr. Slinter, there's no objection to making that transfer.
We talked about that.
Of Mr. Underwood over to Woodway, and we'll go ahead and make both of these. We'll move him and move the other gentleman temporarily up to, up to the seminary and then, uh, see if he's interested full time or if you have someone else. If there's, if I hear no objection, we'll move in that direction.
Sounds like we're moving in that direction.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have a request for closed session acquisition or disposition of property.
Prior to that.
Did I miss one?
No, uh, but I've got, I've got three or four. If you wanna deal with them there or under my reports, either one.
Bring them on.
Okay. As you recall, we had break-in over at the transfer station a few months ago and the central garage. Uh, there'd also been some break-ins at some of the, uh, at at least one lumber shed in the county, uh, another business in that general area, and, uh, one of those businesses was hit again about two weeks ago. The school board maintenance office or shop, not the, not the, uh, not their bus shop, but the maintenance building beside it, we broke into this past weekend. Uh, Gary Consworth, he had discussed with me possibility of, of installing alarm system on our buildings over there, uh, because of how they're located. They're behind two gates and, but still, uh, once you're in there, practically no one has visibility of that area. I, I can see part of the dog pound area of my home, but in your, everything else, I mean, you don't get a clear enough view, and, and it's that way pretty much on the whole property. But, uh, he suggested possibly getting a, uh, alarm system. I told him to get some quotes. He's obtained, uh, quotes from two companies, uh, for an alarm system at the transfer station and all associated buildings over there. That would include, uh, the equipment shed, the scale house, the central garage, and the animal pound. Uh, these would have audible alarms as well as, they would be monitored for dialing. Uh, they would, uh, do a direct dial to nine-one-one, and we could also have at least one, on one of these companies' quotes, you could have up to two other numbers besides nine-one-one that it would make contact to. On the one of them, it would only make one additional call. Uh, the two, uh, that he got quotes from was ADT, which is a nationwide company, and then Fleener Security Systems, which is out of Johnson City, uh, Tennessee. Under ADT's proposal, the, uh, system, the total equipment, uh, installed would be eighteen-hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. The monthly monitoring fees for all the different sites would be two-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and ninety-five cents for an annual cost of twenty-six, fifteen, forty. I ran out what the first year cost would be, what the third year co, three years of cost and what five years of cost would be. Under, uh, Fleener Security Systems, their quote, their equipment is much, uh, more, their, their installation of the equipment is more expensive, uh, but their monitoring fee is significantly lower. Their assist, uh, equipment installation's thirty-nine-hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. The monthly monitoring fee is a one-fifty-nine ninety-five. Uh, now, for the first year, uh, ADT clearly is cheaper, uh, forty-five-hundred dollars as, uh, compared to fifty-eight-hundred and some. But by the third year, the monitoring fees begin to make up the difference, and by the third year, the Fleener Security System proposal is actually cheaper. And then every year thereafter that you keep it in use because the monitoring fees are lower, as long as you don't have any equipment fee or anything like that. Uh, so we just wanted to toss this out. We do not have any, uh, any funds budgeted for this, but we felt like it warranted some consideration since we're seeing multiple break-ins at some locations in the county.
I would prefer not to have an audible alarm over there. I'd rather just go to the sheriff's office and let them run them down.
Well, the, I guess the other issue in that is, uh, there's gonna be a little bit of time lag in being able to do that. Uh, of course, you may, it may not matter if they don't hear an alarm. Uh, sometimes the audible alarm will deter them from even damaging something to begin with in trying to break in.
Mm-hmm. But there's only ones coming here.
True, true.
Or you might be there, you're right.
Well, I doubt it. Not after so late at night, cause mildly, it's a block my, blocked my hearing. But, uh, the other thing is it's gonna take a little bit of time to get in because you gotta go through two gates to get in there, and they're gonna have to be unlocked.
Yeah.
And so, and you, you don't know what deputy might respond or who might be on call or who might be working there, so you can't put keys out to everybody that might actually be answering. It'd have to be one of our personnel that let them in. But we just felt like it's something, you know, worth considering, and I'm sure you can silence the alarms. I'm, I'm sure we could, we could do away with it.
Yeah, I think we probably need to do that. It's a lot cheaper than what we've lost over there. Any you leave on that?
No, nothing, nothing at all. This would include, uh, motion detectors, uh, as well as contactors on windows and doors. These are all priced with a inside siren. And I don't know if to keep that control would be any cheaper without that or not, but it potentially could be. And I don't know if you wanna act on this tonight or if you wanna give us some thought or?
Yeah, I'd like to kinda give us some thought, you know.
We're meeting again next week.
There's a lot of robbers at Bank and they got all kinds of security systems and they still get robbed, so I don't know the cost to take a chance or not. Really worthwhile, but when you can buy cameras, my, my personal opinion, I mean, just add more additional cameras in there, record the father not there.
We had the guy on camera this time, but.
They were hooded.
He had a hood. He got a brief instant of a shot of him, but other than that.
We'll talk about that next week.
Yeah, all right.
The next thing also has to do with that property over there, and I think we've discussed this, but I don't think I got an actual approval for this, but the PSA, uh, we've still got a few old records in the old transfer station office building. Uh, we need, we're, we're in the process of getting them moved out, either moved over here, the ones that had to be kept. Most of them can be destroyed, but we have to identify exactly what's in the boxes before we can destroy them. Uh, once that's done, the PSA, they have a, uh, trailer, basically a construction site trailer, sitting on the property over there now that their, uh, fielding flow is used as a semi-office, uh, and they have requested to, rather than us tear that old building down, if, if the county would allow them to just use that building. We would not, I mean, we'd switch the pair and everything over, uh, into their name, but they just, rather than tear it down, they would like to be able to use the building, and I didn't see a problem with doing that. So is, is there any objection to us allowing them to do that once we've completely vacated?
See any problem, there's no cost to us anyway.
As long as it's written up that they, they assume our responsibility.
Yeah.
Because, you know, these places ain't built, it's not that great shape.
Right. I would suggest that we just, we do a basic lease on the property, which requires them to be fully responsible for it, so. Okay. The extension office would like to cook a meal for you.
That's what I'm talking about.
At your, at your next regular meeting. Uh, they have hired a new, uh, 4H agent, uh, who will start September twenty-fifth. Uh, she's originally from Augusta County, uh, she's a graduate of Virginia Tech. They would like to cook dinner for the board and to meet with you prior to your October board meeting to allow them to introduce her to you and I guess just sort of update you on extension. I think when we discussed it, they probably just served the meal down here in the, uh, in the conference room. So I'll verify that. You all have any objections to that?
No.
All right.
For the menu?
On that, I don't.
Honestly, don't have chicken.
No chicken. The next item, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass these out for you to look at, and I'm gonna explain, uh, what these are. The, the, you know, we've been meeting, uh, regarding a regional industrial facilities authority for LeWise, Scott Dickinson, and City of Norton. And they have, they, in, in, going through those meetings, they've come up with some hope bylaws for a, uh, possible authority. And, uh, and also the group, uh, by consensus has sort of determined that they feel like the best process to use in creating this entity is to do it by ordinance. Uh, there's, there's a couple of different ways you can do it, but they, they prefer that it be done by ordinance, which requires each locality to act on it, but prior to adopting any ordinance, you're required to hold a public hearing. So what I'm proposing, uh, tonight is to schedule a public hearing next month at the October meeting, uh, to take public comment on the potential, uh, creation of a regional industrial facilities authority. Uh, the, the creation of the authority does not obligate you to anything. Now, the first two sheets of that is just the actual, uh, ordinance to be adopted. There's basically a resolution adopting that ordinance, uh, to create it. Uh, then the pages following that are the proposed bylaws, and the proposed name that's been, uh, stated for this is the Lonsin High Regional Industrial Facility Authority. Once created, as I think I've explained in the past, uh, members would have the option, there would be no obligation, but they would have the option then to create partnerships within the authority, uh, to work on industrial projects. Uh, you, you would not, just because a couple or maybe three of the other entities wanted to go together and work together on a project, it would not force you to go into it. Each county would select, their, their membership on that, uh, board would determine if they wanted to participate or not. And, uh, you, you could have two counties participating together, you could have two counties in a city, you could have a county city, or you could have three counties, you could have all four. It just depends on what the project is and how each county feels about it, if they feel like it would be beneficial to them to participate in that project. So, uh, it's, it's just another tool, hopefully, that they'll be able to use on a regional basis to be able to do better as far as getting some additional, uh, funding from the state in trying to move in economic development projects forward. So, uh, if there's no objection, uh, we'll go ahead and schedule a public hearing next month, advertise it, and, and have it on the agenda for next month to consider this, uh, ordinance for adoption.
So when do we have to have a public hearing, do we actually still, or normal meeting?
Do it during, it, it would be at the first part. All public hearings, we typically do it the first of our regular meetings, but it has to be during the regular meeting. So we'll, we'll move forward, uh, with that. Uh, another than the closed session.
I've got a couple things for the closed session, especially since the fence-in, fence-out thing that we've.
That's on my list.
Kick, kick, kick. Do we have to have that, a public hearing on that?
Yes, that will require a public hearing. Any ordinance, either the adoption of an ordinance or the amendment of an ordinance requires a public hearing.
Can we add to that one or do we need to hold it the next one? Cause it's something we need to move forward on. We discussed it today.
Well, we need to have a draft one in place before we can, before we, I, I prefer to have it, I've pushed myself at times and, and sent the ad before I was completely done with an ordinance, but one like that one, I would rather have it in, in final draft form before we actually schedule the advertisement. If we can get it ready, uh, we'll have to advertise two weeks in advance of the October meeting, and that's coming a little bit early. Uh, we'd have to advertise on the.
I'm saying, can we get something pulled off? Cause I mean, it's pretty standard, there's fence-in, fence-out laws all over the country. I mean, we ought to be able to put something and just change the name, put Lee in, it shouldn't be that.
I would prefer to shoot for November.
That's fine. I'm saying, just, if we wanna look at it the next month and then have a public hearing the following month, it's just something that, you know, we've talked a lot of get clarified.
I, I honestly don't think I can get it ready to advertise by the third, well, I'm not gonna be here the week, the first week of October, so that's, I won't have anything done that week, and next week is pretty much booked for me too already, so. Uh, I'd done some preliminary work on it, but that was back in the spring before I got sick and all that got pushed aside, so.
Yeah, I know, we had budgets. I mean, it's, I ain't saying nothing.
And I haven't lost it off the radar screen, it's on my list, but.
I think which is just something we can get done, checked off, then it's, it's done, and then, I don't know, I'll tell you what, Mr. Sheriff. So, I just got this, this thing, this one here. When we, uh, was done the, uh, budget funding from the first of the year, there was approximately four thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, that the sheriff had put on for, uh, tactical equipment. And then when we was discussing the budget, we said if he come up with a, uh, more clear-cut thing of what they was looking for, and this was laying here, see, and it. Uh, Lee County Sheriff's Office is requesting funds to purchase two new ballistic helmets, two mo, new ballistic vests, one ballistic shield, and one dynamic entry tool kit for the agency's special response team. This equipment is essential to our team operation for protection and high-risk search warrants responding to active shooter or in tactical criteria is needed. The amount of funds I'm requesting will be twenty-nine-hundred and ninety-five dollars. Our office is asking your support, pay twenty-nine-hundred and ninety-five to obtain the needed equipment. Thank you for, for every consideration and thanking each of you for your support. And they've got it broken down to two ballistic helmets, it's five-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a piece, ballistic vests, two of them, two-hundred-and-sixty dollars a piece, ballistic shields, fourteen-hundred dollars, and dynamic entry kit. And as some of you know, we've been working a lot closer with the EMS group out of, uh, Marion, I actually spoke to them today on trying to get a tabletop to come through, and eventually we're actually going to try to do like an active shooter or, uh, something like that, to kinda see where we stand on our preparedness. But, uh, I would, I would recommend, cause that's not, I've seen surprises on some vests and stuff, and, and I think for that to be the whole county and have them know that hope we never have to use it, but if we did have that situation, I don't think that twenty-nine-hundred and ninety-five dollars is a huge, huge price for them to ask for.
Be good to have it in play.
So I would make the motion that we allot them their, uh, quick twenty-nine-hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Second, hold on, any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's all I have, Mr. Sheriff.
Thank you so much. Okay, now to get our request for closed session. Unless anybody else got, unless anybody else has got a couple more out, then we'll pull out of their box.
That ain't my fault, that's why. That ain't my fault, that's why.
Okay.
Pardon?
Okay, going to closed session. Employment Personnel two point two dash three seven one one eight point one. And acquisition of real property is two point two dash three seven one one eight point three. That's it.
Second, okay, all in favor of going into closed session?
Aye.
Any opposed?